There you go, Molly. Welcome everyone to the snowy night in Minnesota. Ryan. We'll introduce Ryan Anderson to Stockholm.
I don't know. I think he was supposed to, but perhaps because of the weather out there, he decided to throw you a little...
Hey, well, we'll introduce him. We'll introduce Ryan Anderson, St. James newspaper. Welcome, Ryan. Where'd you come from? Give us a little background.
Okay, well, I came here from Indiana. I was a reporter for the Narian Chronicle Tribune there. And for that, I was in graduate school at DePaul University in Chicago, getting a master's in journalism. But originally, I'm from Wisconsin, so close to Milwaukee, suburb of Milwaukee. So sort of been around in some different places, including here, but always the Midwest, just the states. So used to the weather, but still didn't make the fun walk over here this evening. I'll live, I guess.
Can you tell me anything about the football game last night?
Oh, no, no, I...
Green Day Packers and...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a Green Day Packers fan. I guess I'm the one person from the state who's not, so yeah. I don't have any affinity for them, nor do I have any antipathy for them, so we're okay there. I'm unbiased, as people should be.
Very good. Welcome to St. James.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome. Your consideration for approval, the minutes. Any further discussion? In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Perry. Consent items five, A, B, and C. Any questions?
How much would you say civil aid do for it?
It's in your handouts this evening. Payment tonight, four hundred and seventy-two thousand. And then approximately four hundred and ninety-seven thousand. We will be withholding some of the funds until next spring because the tarpaulins that they left on... They will not be able to repair until next spring.
You did like one and a half times yesterday, or...
No, we'll work with the total.
So then twenty-seven thousand would be in total, which is about five percent. Yep. I withheld, excuse me. Motion by Josh to hear second. Paul, any further discussion? In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Perry, announce. Put on the six A or bid money for solid waste bids, Joe.
We received two quotes for a five-year contract for residential and city-owned properties for solid waste collection. In your packet, you have an attached letter from Hometown Sanitation, which is basically stating that they would like council to either reissue the RFP or do an open market. They feel they need between ninety and hundred and twenty days between the contract award date and the start date for a smooth transition. Waste Management has provided a quote for the five-year contract with no change in the thirty-two gallon cart, sixty-four gallon cart, the ninety-six gallon cart, and thirty-gallon bags. We have asked this year, and that included in the RFP, was what's called a load generator cart fee, which they have given us a quote of six dollars and ninety-five cents a month. It's for a thirty-two gallon tote, and it's two dollars less than the weekly pickup because the pickup would be every two weeks rather than every week. A way of maybe encouraging senior citizens to go through a tote rather than a bag and give them a break.
So a different color? How are you going to determine the difference?
It'll be on the route sheets. It's actually pretty easy for them to keep straight.
This one?
It's on the route sheets. It's easy for the driver to keep straight on the route sheets. We do that in other meetings.
We also requested that they give us a quote for a community-wide cleanup. And they've given us a per compacted ton rate of fifty-five dollars a ton for two events during the five-year period. It would be done at a central location. People would bring their material to the central location. And something that we would be working with Waste Management if you decide to accept this contract in regards to when it would take place and how we would charge, what we would charge now for the items that would be taken to the site.
Are we required to handle that?
No, we are not. We just threw it in as an option. The per-ton price is a significant rate in regards to what the compacted tonnage is usually charged at a landfill. They did attach a five-dollar fuel table that would go into effect if diesel fuel reaches over five dollars a gallon. And you do have attached teeter information, a spreadsheet showing what that impact would be. They would also offer to provide to the city of St. James free service for the following locations: Electric Department, wastewater, Humane Society, Water Department, liquor store, park and campground, street, multicultural building, community building. And that has an annual savings of approximately eleven thousand dollars to the city per year.
I don't know if anybody had calls, but over the last couple of years, I've had calls on the citywide cleanup. That's why they added it in, and just get excited to do it, have the ability, not obligated, but have the ability.
Are the contracts always a five-year contract?
Yes.
So we don't have the option of saying, you know, three-year contract and the possibility of hometown?
The reason that we did a five-year contract was because of the type of investment that's necessary for them to go to the toll and cart system.
Do you have anything you want to... Gary Henzing is here, in Zieg, excuse me. Waste Management, sort of, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Not really. It's all, it's very, it's a very straightforward request for the proposals. You know, we definitely value our relationship with St. James. Otherwise, I wouldn't have driven here tonight. We just, I guess that's really all I have to say. We really do appreciate the business, appreciate the relationship. I've given Joe my card. That's basically first contact for anybody. I encourage you to call me directly rather than trying to go through a customer service line. It's a lot easier and a lot more...
Mike, letter from Hometown Sanitation Services. You can address your letter.
Well, you know, our... Let's go up there.
If you want. Yeah, far from there if you stand up, that's okay.
Yeah, this is funny. You know, our, as it says there in the letter, a company of our size, we do require a little bit more lead time to get the necessary containers ordered and delivered and put together and all that fun stuff. So that's where we were, we're kind of coming from. We could certainly have bid on it, but we spent four and a half years building a reputation of customer service, and I was uncomfortable committing January 1st when carts might not have been here until December 30th, and I'm not spending New Year's Eve and making everybody else spend New Year's Eve delivering containers. So it really kind of prohibited that for us. It's totally possible the stuff would have been here, but we just ran into a problem there. So we proposed two options to the council. Option one, reissue an RFP. Option two, open up the market as other communities have done, let consumers decide for themselves. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to bid on the service, and I think we've built a pretty solid relationship with the county and hopefully with the city's residents through the recycling program. You know, we appreciate being here. If you have questions on anything else, you know, we're certainly open to answering anything you might have. But that's, that's the reason for the letter that we have included as our bid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those, any questions of either company?
So if we were to reissue the RFP, that we could extend about giving them a little time to, is that a legal thing?
Well, you know, I didn't know that that was going to be a consideration. We did this with the intention of letting them accept it. Contract with Waste Management is terminated. We need to provide the service to our community. Motion by Mike?
Second.
Second by Paul to accept the bid of Waste Management. Any further discussion?
What would be about having a, an open market? What, what are the disadvantages?
Primary disadvantage that I see is the amount of trucks that we're going to end up on the city streets picking up garbage different days of the week. And we already have aging streets that really take a beating in the spring of the year. Are you prepared to start replacing streets? I don't know if Ray has anything to add to that. Would be a lot, it would be a few more trucks on the road, on our streets, especially in the spring.
Do others show the communities doing, anything like that?
There, there are communities with open markets. Really, the move is more towards municipal contracts to control.
Yep.
There would be some advantages. Depending on the size of trucks, we use a smaller truck, which actually puts less weight on the streets. And then the other thing that's been a big advantage, and especially like the window market, we overlaid, so we have, and it worked out then, Waste got the contract for recycling, but we have the advantage of putting our trucks on the same route as the recycling, so people only have to remember one time. Husbands don't have to be told by their wives or vice versa. So there are advantages, and if you do go to an open market system, the customer actually gets to choose, and usually customer service levels will go up. That would be one advantage to that open market system. I mean, just like, we don't, I mean, you don't get to tell people where they buy their cars and their groceries, you know, and that's the advantage of the open market. And we compete in, in our hometown of Windham, where we started, that's why we did start. And in Fairmont, you know, another big market in the area, we compete all the time. And we're thrilled to death to do that.
Any further discretionary questions? Not all in favor, signify of accepting Waste Management. Is... They're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Say a last row of show of hands. Approve for Waste Management. One, two, three, oppose. Two, motion passes three to two, to a word of contract to Waste Management for the next five years. All right. Thanks, everybody. Mr. Perry.
Mike, I can send a draft of contract to Joe by end of week.
Aye.
Or to Steve.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Just over here. Hi, Josh.
Hi.
Somebody special at the council meeting, I'm guessing he's not here. He's lying down in a minute with his girlfriend. So Leanne has been with the city forty years. She started writing this letter. What's so funny? Dedicated loyal employee. She goes, if there's ever any dedication loyalty, it's right here. City Clerk Trezor for the past forty years, professional leadership, her staff, all city employees, declared Tuesday, today, Leanne Nibby Day, November 5th, for recognition of her dedicated service to the city of St. James.
Yep. Since the cameras all snowlogged.
Your eyes closed. Yeah, your eyes closed.
Go to Toby, request to allow open air storage to campers and campground. You have a big packet. Letter from Steve regarding the potential liability for bill. Any motion for this to allow or not allow you to look at the book?
I'm open.
Motion by Josh to deny the open air storage at campus and campground. Is there a second?
Fair.
Noni, is there any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimous to deny the open air storage. Thirteen A, Electric Department hiring in.
I'd like your approval to hire the Aslam as a new employee at the Electric Department.
And he was your second, he was, he was in the interview previously when he hired, okay, ready? Okay, ready. And the probation would be nine months versus six. And you'll address it before the nine in case you need to have additional...
We'll have, we'll have a good idea by then.
Yep, okay. I'll give reserve that ability to... Council, which is Paul. Noni, any further discussion? Who we started? All in favor, it's going to pass us tonight, and so we start one. All in favor, signify by saying aye? Oppose? Motion carried unanimous. Thanks. Flare Department Generator, please.
We, we got an opportunity, we got a generator that's at the firewall right now at the back of the generator that RNA gave us like fifteen years ago that they were done with, and so they donated it to us. It's only a sixty-amp generator. We got the opportunity to, so preview is updating, preview's updating, or Ramage one are updating, and they're being run upon at preview. It'd be a two-hundred-amp service that would take care of everything at the firewall. They offered it to us for five thousand dollars. They said they could go off the market and get probably ten to twelve thousand for it, for it since it's the local people. That they'd give it to us for five thousand dollars. It'd be a natural gas one. It's Oren, Oren forty-six KW. But then yesterday I started doing it, and they wanted to see if we could make a deal where, yeah, we won't charge them for any false alarm, because now if you get, if you get three false alarm fire calls in a quarter, then we bill them. They weren't, if we'd make a deal with them that if we didn't bill them for any false alarm fire calls in the next ten years, they'd sell it to us for seven hundred and fifty dollars. They've had one false alarm in the last two years. What, Steve?
What was the reason? You afraid of going to get bored or...
No, because if they, um, this money goes to the corporate office. And if we start billing, it would come out of the general, or their, their local budget, so they won't get anything out of it this way. So they thought we'd make a deal with us where it would provide us a good choice and provide them something. I think it's a good deal for us because, like I said, they've had one false alarm in the last three years.
Steve, your opinion?
As long as it's mutual consideration.
I mean, I haven't been back to them, but that's what I talked to my...
What if they purchase the green one?
They'd sell it to us for somewhere around fifty dollars. I talked to the electrician, and he said they know it can get ten to four thousand, and then you...
I assume a no-brainer means you would like to make a move from here. Second, then?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? So you'll put an agreement, Steve, if you do it?
We'd also, if some other business comes with some kind of a deal like this, we'd have to consider that also, I would think.
I mean, case by case basis.
Case by case, okay.
The other one, I hope we can maybe, we can put a test copy and see if someone wants it. The radiator's bad in it, and we've just been looking that along, so we can see if it's worth anything. Because if it's a one, this one would be natural gas, so it's automatic starts and switches. So we won't do anything else, stand with it, because we just, it's not...
All right. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Any other questions or issues? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimous. And we'll take a moment to thank Pittsburgh for the relation to the community generosity to the city of St. James. You ready, Larry? Yes. Thirteen C, Street Department request for this loader ring.
We have budgeted in 2014 for a new loader for the Street Department to replace our ninety-four CAT IP-18. I've been discussing this. We've been looking for a used one or a rental return. We have, we did find one, but when we did a little history check on it, we found it was out in North Dakota being used out at the oil fields, so we decided we didn't want, we wanted to steer clear of that. So I had Brian and RDO put together a brand-new one, and he told me if we could, if we order it before the fifteenth of November, we will save a seven percent state bid increase. And we will not receive the loader until either the end of December or the first part of January, forty-five working days. And we will save the sales tax.
We need to not receive it till after January.
That is correct.
So we don't have to get another bid, we just have to...
It's a state bid.
Okay. It's a state bid.
We receive it after January one, Steve. We're cleared for no sales tax, right? That's my understanding. Okay.
I did get a clarification from the Leecoming office, our conference also, and on receipt, on receipt, so.
Don, we don't want it.
That's already, you've already had that discussion.
It might be good if you decided to do this, to put in your motion that delivers after January, just to, we run record for that, Steve?
Right.
Okay.
Ray, could you explain to me why you were steering clear of the one from the oil fields in the oil field?
Well...
What reasoning?
It's a, it was a rental unit up there. It had four hundred and fifty hours, and I didn't know what kind of care it had during the four hundred and fifty hours while it's on in the field because it was used by seven different companies. And it would only save us about eight thousand dollars.
Oil wells get hard, hard gauge.
Yep, it's been put through the phases.
It may have looked good, but it's been, you know, the picture looked good, but when I heard it was used by that one, when I got the list of the companies that used it, it was all of those.
No questions?
And we will be able to use all of our attachments that we already have for our orders on this load.
Mike, Paul, any further discussion?
Further discussion after the first minute.
Notification in. Anything else, Ray? One in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous to stay up for... Thirteen E will jump to thirteen E. Street Department request for this dumpster.
At the budget committee meeting, we're, we also budgeted for a cannon dump truck for next year's purchase. And I, at the request of the budget committee, I've been looking for a used one. And we have come across a 2004 Sterling cabin chassis that we can purchase for approximately fifty thousand dollars. And price steal has a box, a used box for just under twenty thousand. So we get into that truck for about a hundred and, or seventy thousand dollars instead of a hundred and sixty or a hundred and eighty for a new one. And I would like permission to move ahead with this, but I have to find comparable quotes for this first. So I just want permission from the council to move ahead with it, so.
Subject to you finding another quote, and this being a lower quote?
Yes. Then I'd bring that back, and hopefully in two weeks, so.
And it'll save a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
That is correct.
Let me see, and we're getting rid of a nineteen eighty-two?
Nineteen eighty-two, yes.
Should be twenty-two years older than the one we're getting.
That is correct.
And help me know, something goes from the street to the water?
That's, that's, that's on a, we, later on in the year, we're going to look at a flood truck. And that's truck that would be replaceable to the water.
That's an old gray one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimous. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. I'd just like to make one other comment. We are in the budget committee, or in the budget, we budgeted for a jetback for this following, this coming year also. And I had been doing research, and I've been looking at different companies. And I would like permission also to continue looking for use on that. And I will be bringing back. I already get some information back, but I'd like to continue looking and...
On the two of them?
On two of them, yeah.
I think you need permission, the budget committee recommended you just go do that, so continue looking for usuals, because we suggested you try and find usuals to do that.
Okay, thank you.
See you soon, I think you're... Thirteen D, your excess property resolution.
This is declaring a parcel of property west of the former Inger Body Shop building. In your packet, you have a massive pipe-shaped pieces of property. One is, the top one is the portion that we would declare as excess property. The bottom one, the county stated road is in part of that. The county is in the process right now of surveying that property to make sure that none of that leads over into the first pie sheet piece that we have, or requesting that we declare as excess property.
And the body shop was purchased by a business in town, and that they must have expanded, and that's the reason for wanting it. We have no use for it. We got it from, still with us.
Nineteen?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. How do you determine the price, something like that?
What we do is we declare it as excess property, and we advertise it, and we get open bids.
Okay.
We own that upper right-hand triangle, that is pretty much...
We own the lower, that's right, the whole, whole works.
The whole rectangle in there.
Correct.
Minus whatever the county has to do.
Correct.
And we declare the whole thing as...
The only thing that I've declared as excess is the north high piece, not the south.
Okay, so the south, then we would just keep?
Or what we would do is if we can determine that there is significant excess, and we don't know if there's any excess there.
Well, in county, as you say, it might be more. They're surveying to determine just where that road is and where it is.
Correct.
And how much is road right away that we need to curb, you know, you're going to have something.
So we just declare the remainder as part of the use.
And there's no reason for us to keep the little...
We wouldn't keep anything, no.
That's, that's nice to draw up, that's...
No, it was, it was actually drawn up this way because the WR pass dated it to the city at two different times. Two different years.
But whatever the county didn't take, we would want to sell, dispose of one hundred percent of what's there. And we, we have no reason to take use for what's here. Ray, all you do is mow it, right?
That is correct.
That's absolutely no use for it.
Nope. Nope.
Isn't it right?
Correct.
Right, I'll try and purchase it.
Yeah, it's indicated in the crystal already.
No questions? Paul? Josh? To show after the survey coming back in the county, whatever the meaning is, would be declared as surplus.
Yeah.
And what I would do is not publish the resolution until we get that clarification from the county to make sure that we've got everything covered.
So, Steve, any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Thirteen, yeah. Mike? You have a letter, Mike Heineman. Come on up here, buddy. We have a letter in the amendment, in the handouts tonight. And we'll let Mike explain a little bit. What are your suggestions?
Um, I live here in town and my utility bills usually roughly around a hundred dollars a month. And the outdoor meter wasn't working. And I had a stool leak, like, you know, we build like a tank, sometimes it would stick, sometimes it would be fine. Uh, my current utility bill is one thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Um, usually when you get your utility bill of something high, you know, you like running your air conditioner, you, you know, try to keep it like at an average. And, um, obviously with this, it's gone over my, you know, more than I probably pay in a year. So I was just wondering if there's any way with the, um, water or the sewage or something, like if the bill could be adjusted somehow.
Mark?
Back in August, when we, uh, read the meters, he had a, a higher than normal usage. Uh, I did try and get ahold of him, did, didn't make contact. September, the outside meter box had quit working. Uh, I called Mike, Mike called me back, we tried to set up a time. And we didn't get a time set up, it was during construction. Um, kinda got put on the back burner. October fifteenth, when we read the meters, I called Mike, I believe on the sixteenth. Uh, he got back to me right away, we set up that we went over on the seventeenth and read it. So the meter is actually catching up for more than just one month. We didn't get the correct readings properly from, say, the middle of August until October seventeenth. So, you know, the meter in the basement worked correctly, worked fine, the outside box did malfunction. Uh, we did replace the outside box and the inside head of the meter. Uh, gave Bonnie the, the actual readings. Um, she had estimated, I believe, the month before. Uh, obviously with his stool leaking, we were underestimating.
How do you? Part where you said you catch up, how do you catch up? Did the, by the read on the inside in the basement?
Correct. The meter in the basement, unless it completely malfunctions, does keep track, keeps working. It's sending the signal outside, either you have a broken wire of the box outside. And in Mike's case, the box outside had a little burr on it, would not let it switch over the numbers. And that happens, you know, the way they're machined right from the factory. There's nothing I have control over that, it's just, we, uh, we just didn't make contact in September the way you should have, with us being busy with construction, it kinda got put on the back burner.
But these are actual figures.
These are, yes, should be.
So Mike's house physically used those gallons?
The, the gallons went through the meter, there is no question about it.
I just believe knowing that I was using that much water, I would have controlled it somehow because, you know, I'm one person, a single person living in that house, and that's a lot of water.
It was probably the faulty toilet, I would assume.
That is currently fixed, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Have a wooden, wood, you thought there'd been a problem at the first read, even then you took a estimate after that?
In August, we got the correct reading. And they, he had a higher than normal water usage there. So it was, it, it's been running for quite some time. And in September is when we got the faulty reading.
Had you not.
And I should not say a faulty reading, we had, the box was stuck.
Well, what was the reading for August then?
I believe it was like sixteen hundred cubic feet, I don't know what that would be for money wise.
Well, what is five hundred and seventy-one dollars? How many cubic feet is that?
Uh, you'd have to give me a calculator.
That's a way for a rough guess. That's the sewer part of Mike, uh, Don.
What's that?
That's the sewer part.
Okay, well, water bill's even higher, seven, four feet.
Correct.
I, I have not actually seen this bill or know the gallons or anything, Bonnie would maybe know more about it than I do.
It's like twenty-five thousand cubic feet.
How many?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand cubic feet?
Twenty-five thousand thirty cubic feet, it's right on the.
Okay, so you guys twenty.
That's, uh, November first.
November would be October bill.
October is reading, correct.
September to the fifteenth of October, but. My question is, when you found out the first time there was a problem, what was the billing then?
What was your bill in August?
Right, it was, uh, August bill and found September.
No, in, in August, we read the.
In September, it was one oh nine eighty-seven, and I believe in August, it was one fifty-five.
You're talking a hundred and fifty, well, dollars?
Dollars, yes.
Okay, so one a hundred and fifty, one oh one?
Two one oh nine.
One oh nine, that would have been August?
It would have been.
September.
September, yeah.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out if, when, you're saying that you're just one person, which I realize you are, that when you found out how high this was, that you said you would have, you know, you would have done something to control it. That's the question, when did you find out it was that high?
One fifty-five didn't seem, I guess.
No, I understand that, but when would?
Plus I didn't find out until Friday, when I got the bill and the half a thousand dollars. Because it's been roughly around a hundred dollars, given, you know, it's never been over two hundred or more.
When did you contact him, Mike, to tell him he had?
The, the first time I tried to contact him was in August, after August fifteenth, I don't know the exact date.
Okay, there, stop, stop right there, why?
Cause his bill was higher than normal.
Okay, that's, okay, so when we say higher than normal, we're talking seven hundred dollars or six hundred dollars or?
Well, he said it was a hundred and fifty-five, if I, if I remember right.
And if that was all water, that would, the computer would flag that to go right here.
But as, as with a stool, once it starts having a problem, it never gets better, it always gets worse.
So maybe you just started with a stool. You may have been there quicker.
If, if, honestly, I'll take the blame, I was busy with construction.
You're the question.
Um, we, we would have been over there, there's no question.
We're not looking for blame, Mark.
No, I know.
Okay, we're just. Either way, his toilet, his toilet was malfunctioning and that was the root cause of the problem.
Yeah, I understand that, so. But, but again, again, I come back to, Mike made the statement, if he had known it was that high, being a single person living in there, he would have tried to control it. My question would be, when did he find out it was overwhelmingly high? Going from one oh one to one fifty, I don't think that, to me, that isn't a big. Uh, I see a bill for seven hundred and forty dollars for water, then, but this was the bill he just got this week, right? Which would have been an October bill.
Yeah, fifteenth of September to fifteenth of October.
And the September bill was a hundred and fifty-one dollars, right?
Correct, or fifty-five, I think it was one fifty-five.
Showing you, yeah.
I guess that showing it is.
His previous bill, the last one was one oh nine, so the one before that one's, and then you're one fifty.
Yes, so.
September was.
And a hundred and twenty, so.
Yeah, because one month got estimated in there, so it took its average usage. Oh, okay, okay. There's, there's, there's a month between the high bill and this bill, that's the problem because of the estimation. So, yeah, his last month bill would look normal, but the month before that would have been the high one. Which we don't know what that is.
And on October seventeenth, uh, Mike's mom was over at the house. And Ryan was over there and had explained to her that, you know, they did have a leak, a problem. So.
And that was discovered in October?
October seventeenth.
Okay, which would be.
We read it on the fifteenth.
Part of this bill, this bill looks at now.
Yep, we read it on the fifteenth and we were over there on the seventh.
Part of this bill could be the estimation from the September regal also. Estimated low. It, it would have been estimated, yeah, for his mom, yeah, it would have been estimated too. He had the running toilet, then, yeah, we'd be estimating low, right?
I think also the key is the city staff did leave a message on August twentieth, that he, that they needed him to contact them because of the fact that the bill was high.
Did you, you not contacting Mike?
I contacted, um, Mark as soon as I got the message.
In Sep-, on, in September, I think we left a letter at your house, Mike, I don't know if you ever found that.
I, I just got the message on the phone and called.
I believe in August, we left the letter. I was not aware of the letter, not that it wasn't there.
Oh, no doubt the water went through the meter, it was used. Well, he talked to the staff about paying over the period of time.
And that's what we've done in the past, and the people that have, uh, we've had situations where we had frozen water pipes. And they've ended up with bills that have been over a thousand dollars. And it's interest free, we waive penalties and allow work people.
What's the timeline typically, under payment?
Six months, really? Six, you know, like, six months, fine. Okay.
Six months, how many months?
You shut the payments up like over six month period, Bonnie?
He was gonna sign the form and we were gonna talk about it, so. It was like two hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, six months available, over two hundred bucks plus is.
Current bill.
Plus, so that'll be about three hundred herself, more, Mark.
Is something you can?
I don't think that I can, I, I could, it would be stretching it, because, you know, obviously I'm not gonna know what my bill, assumption my monthly bill is gonna be.
So we set twelve months then, and they could, when it began to last day, and day, which?
A hundred bucks a month, so.
Well, I'm just thinking that this water, I had, like, if I could have controlled it, I would have stopped it. And like this month or what, I, I just think it's ridiculous. It was literally water, a little drip running through my toilet that caused this, and now I'm paying a thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents. I, it's just.
Well, I think.
I would have known about it.
And I think you talked to Mark, that it's still more than just a drip, it's a, correct, Mark?
When, when Ryan was down there and looked at the meter, it has a leak detect on it, it was moving pretty good.
People get surprised at water ripping toilets that run.
And, and I understand that, but I, I got this bill on Friday and I had this taken care of on Monday. So I'm saying, if I would have found out in August, I would not have this thousand dollar bill. It's.
That's what we didn't know in August, you had a running toilet.
But you've estimated on, how often do they go in the house and look at meters? They use the outdoor meter and that's all they go by, so the only way I'm gonna know that my bill's high is when I actually get a physical high bill.
Until there's a discrepancy, which there was, and they tried to get ahold of somebody. Yeah, you take, you, you trust that it's working, it's telling you that doesn't move, or it moves a whole bunch. Like it catches an extra number of load over. And it happens with like years too, either they don't move, or all of a sudden instead only moved a ten thousand, they move a hundred thousand. They catch an extra cog and they flip over.
Right.
Ninety percent of the time, they just quit moving. And actually got it.
So the bottom line is two things, the water physically went through, was done, set up, it was used in the property. Secondly, we hadn't been busy in construction, we had gotten ahold of them quickly.
And it's not that we didn't try.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, Mark.
And I'm not saying, you know, it's anybody's fault, but I'm kinda saying it's not mine, I guess, because, but I'm thinking of, I would have known.
Didn't have no, the toilet was leaking, though.
Once in a while, you know, I would jiggle it and it would stop, I'm, I'm not saying I completely didn't know about, or just let it stop. And then, you know, I never noticed, oh, I had been, was that the reveal, I would shake the handle and it would kinda.
But still, you can't deny the fact that the water went through, you knew, the water went through your beer.
Right.
The only thing that is a surprise is the amount of water went through that beer.
Right.
With the price tag to it. And there was nothing we could have done that, cause we estimated, other than if you'd actually, when, I don't know what date, I'm mystified here anyway, but if we'd have put in a new outside beer, the only thing that would have done, would again, told us that he was using more water. More water, because he had a running toilet. Correct?
He still would have had, uh, from August to September, if I had have gotten in there after September fifteenth, he still would have had a higher than normal bill because it was still running through the toilet. This, this is like two month, not a one month, it's a two, at least a two month, it's not three and a half.
Yeah, it's a two, two and a half month bill.
Yep.
Pretty close, yeah, depending upon when it went in August. You were living there that whole time?
I, I, I stay at my mom's quite a bit, but I, I'm at the house, yeah.
No questions?
Well, the water went through the meter, I think, Mike should just be looking at making some kind of arrangement to. It's, it's too bad the time element didn't work a little bit better, but, I mean, the water went through the meter and.
We still had to pay it, treat it on both ends, so. We can do a little extended payment, not six month, a year, or something like that, make a reason for that. You have a motion?
Ten.
Don makes a motion that he's, well, liable for the bill, but he can set up payments over a twelve month period, with no penalties and no. No interest, thank you, for a second?
Second.
Uh, Steve, what? Can you hear that, Mike?
No.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries unanimous, so you can stop, see, Joe, City Hall and Mike, and sort of.
Okay, thank you.
Don, Paul, Steve.
If the weather straightens out, we do have the combos that print on the table this week. Now leaves will be brought out. Maybe a little smaller. Hopefully they're not.
Sure there's nothing on there, man? I'm sure.
I'm sure you wait forty years, letters, say something.
Mike? Mike, Josh. Station? Ray?
Oh.
Mark?
Nope.
And, uh?
The movie, uh, that we got out there, Free Birds is staying over for another week, and we have a matinee on Saturday morning at seven o'clock.
Ah, Linda, did you put in those other seats?
Not yet.
Oh.
Not yet.
Okay.
That from your coming back?
Well, I went last night, when I was wondering if they put them in where they were at, so.
No, where they're gonna go.
Decided whether we're putting them in the front or right up, as you come up the steps.
We had talked about putting them in the back, not the way up, but in the, you know, as you come up the steps right there, that gives you where it helps it.
The front row?
No, not in the front row.
No, the front row of the next step going up, and your top of the steps, there's a little spread there where you walk. No, Adam. Adam, sorry.
No.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Doug, thanks for taking the time to come to the council meeting, presenting the end for. Many years of service to our committee, so I know you're in Iowa today and you drove up here, that's nice to be there, so thanks very much for doing that. Okay, motion to adjourn. Paul, Josh, stand there and pretend you have a good night.